We're gonna go ahead and get started. Everybody hear me okay? We got a microphone tonight, so we'll pass it around as people need it. Welcome, everybody. A few weeks ago, we had this town meeting. There was a lot more people here that night. That was right after the tornado hit, and there was a lot of commotion going on, a lot of movement, a lot of debris removal, a lot of things happening, and we had FEMA to come down and, let's see, I don't know who all, there was all kinds of organizations here, just to give assistance to those that needed it. And I called another meeting, I asked Desi to set all this up, so that we could see what you folks need still, okay? I know that most are in a rebuild program right now. The debris is pretty well gone, and everybody's starting to get some type of normality back to their lives. And I know that's a long, long process. I joined a volunteer disaster team. John, where you at? There's our president, he's here tonight. It's a group of volunteers that are taking funding, and every penny of it will be delivered out to the people they need out in the county, the tornado victims. Looking forward to all that. We've got all that organized, and it's a-going. Tonight, we're here basically to answer any questions that has left that you folks might have. We're here also to register, if anyone hasn't got their registration done through FEMA. We've got Jim, I set up, I think, three or four ladies here in the back. We can do that individually, and I'm gonna let Jim, or somebody, one of you FEMA guys, Arvin, somebody, we'll have to explain all this to them, and get the registration done. I'm going to tell you about the county. Our county guys have done an excellent job, I think. They work down here every day, and we put a date on the sixteenth, being the last day that the county trucks will all be down here. Billy Smothers is still, will be here in his district, running the trucks, his trucks. But we got two other districts, and we got a lot of mowing and brush cutting that needs to be done on these other 790 miles that we have out in the county, so we need to get busy on some of that stuff, and some blacktopping and whatever. So, the trucks you'll see a little bit fewer, you'll still see county trucks here, but it'll be the first district county trucks that you'll be seeing, okay? Is there any other county stuff I need to mention? Gerald, do you wanna do that? I'm gonna let Gerald tell you just what was hauled out of here. You folks got rid of a lot of wood, I'll tell you that.
We hauled 791 tons to the land bill of debris. We hauled 117 tandem loads to the burn pit, which is out on Hurst Road, and we hauled 140 single axle loads to the burn pit, as of the end of March. That's not counting what we've done till February in April, from the tornado on. The burn pit will probably stop on the sixteenth also, as far as I know right now. That's costing us quite a bit of money per day, so that's probably gonna shut down the
We do know there's a lot of tree roots and things that have to be moved, and we're checking into some other companies that do the grinding, grinding up the tree stumps and whatever, so hopefully we'll have some more information on that in the future. The main, how many tornado victims are here tonight? Okay, well, we got a few. Now, that either means we're doing a good job, or everybody's home trying to do it themselves. I'm hoping that that means we're doing a good job, if there's not that many here.
Dave, where do you cut off? What is a tornado victim? Lost their home, completely lost it, or damaged the roof with hail, or we have other people that have had, or adjusters, severe damage?
Yes, 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 all of them. We have, Desi, help me, a hundred and how many?
Forty-five destroyed.
Forty-five totally destroyed, nineteen major, twenty-one minor. That are just, that's just the homes?
That's, yes, yeah. That's, I mean, that's single I, that's all the residents. And the number was twenty-nine on the assessment that we did with FEMA on the IA, the individual assistance thing, but the affected is a whole lot more than twenty-nine, because there's a lot, with that second cell coming through, there's a lot of people in like, I know, Eastern School Road, and just outside of the actual path, that have hell damage. So, a lot of roof damage, or siding damage, from the result of the hell. And those are still considered as affected from the tornado with that, that's associated with that. And those people are also eligible to register for, you know, because it is under the disaster cover.
That ain't your question? Yeah. Well, pretty well, anyone that's affected, that's throughout the whole county, too. Those numbers include, over in my district, over in the, over in the third district, too, there was some areas hit over there. Okay? Any other questions? Arvin, are you speaking?
I will.
All right. I'm gonna let you folks introduce yourselves, because I forget names terribly.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Arvin Copeland. I'm the Director of Response and Recovery for the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. I also serve as the governor's authorized representative for this past disaster. A few things have happened since the last time we were here. First of all, I will, I will tell you what we already know. First of all, we did get a major declaration for public assistance. Secondly, we did get a major declaration for individual assistance. So what that means is, obviously, we get funding, it makes funding available to help individuals repair their homes that were damaged. It also makes funding available for the county, to repair building, structures, pick up debris, those types of issues that occurred during the severe weather also. So we know that we have funding available for those two issues. What that also means is that FEMA will come to town and develop a partnership with the state of Indiana, which they have done. We have selected a joint field office up north that we all work out of. So what we have here, folks, is we've got the state of Indiana, and we've got FEMA representatives working out of one building, administrating this disaster that occurred in southern Indiana. That's where the rubber meets the road, ladies and gentlemen, that's where all the problems are, that's where we get together and solve them. You have Desi down here working as your emergency management director, trying to coordinate things that have occurred in this, in your area. All of the issues, whether they're with individual assistance, and trying to work through the processes, or whether it's Commissioner Brown trying to work through the process of the debris removal, and trying to figure out how to get the best reimbursement back for the funds, the tax dollars that he has spent. That's where we take care of those problems, that's where we help with those issues. Tonight, I brought a couple colleagues of mine here that I will let, let, talk about, talk about FEMA's side, and some of the assistance that they draw along with in this evening also. Commissioner Brown has asked the state of Indiana and FEMA to come here tonight, so to help with any questions, with any issues you all may have, and that's what we've done. Tonight, I brought the federal coordinating officer along with me, who is responsible for the FEMA activities in this joint field office. He and I will work together to make sure that all issues are taken care of. I've also brought the external affairs person, who spends many hours in the area, and understands the FEMA process, who can also talk to you and help you, talk to you through the process. So when I'm done here, I'm gonna introduce the two, and I will let one of them talk about some of the resources that we have here this evening. But once again, just in, just in my part, and in closing with my part and my statement, I will certainly make myself available for any questions you all have. But, but my mission remains the same, it hasn't changed. When I came down here the first time, Governor Daniels gave me directions to help those folks down there, do whatever you can, expedite whatever you can, do whatever you can to help them. And that's what we're doing, from the position of homeland security, working with FEMA. I will tell you this, after having conversations with Commissioner Brown, and the rest of the commissioners, I assure you that, that everything that they're doing from their position, I believe to be a good job, with the debris removal, and using forced labor, and using volunteers, and taking advantage of all of those opportunities, and not spending tax dollars, I will tell you that, that I truly believe that the commissioners are doing a good job, doing stewards of the tax dollars, and I think that as an end result, I think it's gonna work out well for Washington County. But that's what we're here for. So, I would just close with that. I will ask one of my colleagues to come up, and at least let you all know what resources are here available for you this evening, certainly field any questions you all may have. The federal coordinating officer that, that was here is Mike Scott. Mike, would you stand up, please? Thanks, Mike. Mike, Mike, once again, is working up there, he and I will be the two guys that, that all the issues will, if it rises to our level, we will take care of it. But we have staff that's working with us, we have staff that does a very good job, and certainly will take care of all the issues that they can. Secondly, we have Leo Skinner here, who is the external affairs person, who has certainly been in the midst of this here from the start, and understands what you all have gone through, because he's been out there with you. So, I'm gonna ask Leo to step up here, make a few comments about some of the resources he has for you all, and certainly, they will make themselves available for you after this.
Thank you, Arvin. Appreciate the time and opportunity. We are here to support you. Behind you, for those individuals who have already signed up with FEMA, have registered with FEMA, and you want to check on the status of your application, we have staff in here that can do that. So after the meeting, or sometime during the meeting, if you have questions about where is your, what's the status of your application, what forms do you need to get in, with your insurance forms to get in, they will go right on their computer and find that for you. If you haven't registered and wish to do so, we have two folks in the back, they stand up for me, those are community relations people, they will be glad to sit down with you, provide you a telephone, and you can call, and they can work with you on registering for FEMA assistance. That's the main thing we're here to do tonight, these folks will be able to answer any questions you have. I also would like to introduce our SBA partner, Tom.
Lucero.
Lucero, he's with SBA, and will be able to answer any questions you have. He, I don't think he can go into individual case, but he can speak in generalities, and kind of refer you where you may need to go. We still have our disaster recovery center open in Sellersburg, it's open until Friday at six PM. And one last comment is, if you haven't registered, and you haven't done that, and wish to do it tonight, that's great, but you only have until May eighth, that is the last day that you can register with, for FEMA assistance. And one comment from Tom, I know he wants me to mention this, if you received a SBA loan application, and you have not filled out and returned it, please do so. You do not necessarily have to take the loan, but if you get denied by SBA for a loan, FEMA has other resources that can kick in and support you even more with FEMA grants. So if anybody has that, you can get more information from Tom. We are here to answer any of your questions, be as long as it takes for the meeting, and we have these experts that came in from Indianapolis today to answer your questions about your particular case, and you can register back there. Do you have any general questions of me right now, or the federal coordinator officer that we can answer for you right now, general questions? We know you happen to have individualizations that you may want to talk to one of our staff in the back, and we'd like to keep that private, keep that privacy for you as well. Not having any questions, I thank you for your time, and good day.
Thank you, Leo. Whenever we first started here, we explained to everybody just how important it was to make sure that we get registered, make sure that all these, all these different cases get registered. The SBA loan, make sure that you go ahead and apply for that, you don't have to take it, just apply for it. That way, if you got turned down, FEMA can come in and assist you for other resources. And that was a very important issue that we talked about, and we hope that everybody understood that. I know that there's not many of you here, but pass that along to your neighbors, anyone that, you know, just make sure everybody understood what we said a few weeks ago at that meeting, just so that everybody can get covered in that, okay? All right. Gosh, we got all kinds of people here. Who wants to next?
SBA.
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 I think you better come on up.
Let me do that, I'd be happy to. The Small Business Administration administers a federal program that allows loans to be made back from the US Treasury, to help people get back on their feet after a disaster. The interest rates for homeowners are as low as 1.875 percent, so it's under 2 percent for the loans that can go up to $200,000 to replace your home, an additional $40,000 to replace, maybe you lost a car from the hail, or you lost other personal property from the tornado. And so these low interest rate loans are available to help you get back on your feet. We like to say it's a hand up from the taxpayers of the country, to the taxpayers of the country. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about the program on a one-on-one basis with you. And don't be afraid to apply for the loan, if, when we take a look at it, if we see that this is going to compound your, your personal situation to where you're gonna be digging a deeper hole, we're gonna not approve you for the loan, and we're gonna turn you back over to FEMA for possible additional grant assistance. If, if, on the other hand, the loan can supply a lot more money than FEMA can supply to you, though, and so if you needed to rebuild, and it was more, you needed more money to do it than our loan program fits the bill for that, you also don't have to take all the loans. So if you get approved for a large sum, and you are not wanting to put a second mortgage on your property, or something like that, you can take up to $14,000, and it's like a signature loan, there's no collateralization required up to $14,000. So those are just some of the points about our program that are, are good to know, you can use it to relocate outside the area, if you want to. Sometimes we can take out a first mortgage on a property with, with that low interest rate, to make the payment affordable. So if you had a 4% loan, or 5% loan, now, by taking out the first mortgage at 2% or under, then you're gonna be able to have a same payment, or about the same payment, and it can stretch out for 30 years to pay it back. I hope that helps you a little bit?
And by all means, I want everybody to understand, just because this may be our last meeting together, doesn't mean that we're just gonna up and desert everybody down from Daisy Hill, and everybody everywhere else, we're not gonna do that. We have formed a long-term recovery team here in Washington County, through the Washington County Community Foundation, but it's a separate entity. Judy, I don't know if you want to explain that, or you want me to give it a shot? Oh, thanks. What this, this long-term recovery team, I should let John do it, he's our newly-elected president of this team. What we do, you know, everybody understands the Washington County Community Foundation, right? The principles, the money that goes into the foundation, the principle is never touched, it's the interest that carried off of that, that gets spread out among, for scholarships or whatever, right Judy? I'm really putting this in a nutshell. The long-term recovery team, all the funds that go to that, every penny will go to the tornado victims, okay? This team will be, will consist of case managers, boy, I'm gonna try, construction managers, help me now, case managers, construction managers, oh, thank you, Judy. I knew she'd come up if I stumbled long enough.
The long-term recovery team, I think we're up to about 20 members, and we've formed committees, and the committees are looking at everything from case management, which case management trainers were trained yesterday and today, and there'll be an additional training Friday and Saturday of this week, and construction managers, spiritual needs, let's see, I don't know, everybody else can help me, but, but the thing that we're doing, and we probably need to back up just a step, and you'll start hearing more and more about a, an organization that's called March to Recovery. And March to Recovery was formed six days after the tornado hit, on the Thursday after, and it's a five-county coalition that is working together to help all the people who are impacted by the tornadoes. And the reason why we've joined this coalition is because there's strength in numbers, especially when you're making a case to a national funder, for dollars to help in recovery. So instead of Washington County, and Ripley County, and Clark County, Jefferson and Scott, instead of all those counties individually applying, probably to a lot of the same donors, for the same type of assistance, we've combined resources, and are joining together to garner as much money as we can from national funders. So, March to Recovery has been meeting, like I said, since right after the tornado, we do have representation at that level, and then, those resources, and specifically case management, construction management, and in-kind donations of equipment supplies for reconstruction, are all probably gonna flow through March to Recovery down to the local, down to each local county. So that's been in place for a long time. You know, March to Recovery and the Long-Term Recovery Committee are exactly that, long-term recovery. We didn't focus on immediate need, immediate need, short-term recovery, because that was being handled so incredibly well by the volunteers who've been working in Peaking since March second. So, we've been focusing on long-term recovery, and it takes a while to gear up for something like this. Takes a while to recruit people, it takes a while to get, the training that everyone is going to receive are from national training organizations, so the training is going to be top-notch. Once we get everything going, each family who's registered will be assigned a case manager, and then the case manager will stay with that family until their case is closed. For some families, that can be pretty quick, for some families, that can be several months. But that's the commitment that we're making, to help each family work through this. But I will tell you, one of the first things that the case managers are going to do, working with individuals and families, is make sure you've applied for FEMA, because that is a necessary step. Even if you don't get anything, we need, we need to go through that process. And we understand that a lot of times, that can be very time-consuming, and very frustrating, and the applications may not be particularly easy to work with, and if you can't get that worked on tonight, with the volunteers out here tonight, you know, I would encourage you to go ahead and move forward as much as you can tonight, but there's also additional resources after tonight, but try to take care of as much as you can tonight. So that's pretty much where we're at with this long-term recovery committee. Did you want me to cover anything else? Okay, but, okay, I'll turn it back over to David then, thank you.
I know if I stumble long enough, I get Judy up here, I've got all the organizations and the committees right here. Sorry about that.
I knew it, so we really want to thank John for stepping up and being the person of this, that's a big time commitment on his part, and real confident in his capabilities as a leader, and, you know, this committee's been working really hard.
And John took on a big job, he took on a big job. He's got about 20 people to deal with, and it's gonna be, all the way from ag managing, all the way up to the spiritual, and all the different types of committees, that's gonna be reporting through him, and him coordinating, and all of us getting together, and working with individual families, it's just gonna be a, I can't say an exciting time, it's gonna be a busy time, it's gonna be a busy time, and we really want to get some type of normality back into everyone's lives that were affected by the tornado, and that's our main goal. Judy mentioned registration, that's gonna be a very important issue, we got to get registered. I'm worried that there was only a few families here tonight, I hope all the ones that are out there that aren't here tonight are registered. Do we have a record on the registration?
How you get registered to them? You just do that tonight?
Yeah, we can do that, yeah, do that tonight. Yeah, after this meeting, once everybody's spoken, answered any questions, then we'll, nobody's gonna leave until we get the, the right questions answered, okay?
Yeah, here's the question, registered with FEMA, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's really was, is that, registering with us, with the Long-Term Recovery Team, we want to make sure that you guys get registered with FEMA. There's only gonna, I mean, there's a lot of money out there available, and when I say a lot, I'm kinda stretching that, but, you know, right now, the first thing that you guys wanna do is, is make sure you're registered with FEMA, and you have until May the eighth to do that, okay? We want to, and I'm not stepping on FEMA's toes, but we want you guys to exhaust all the resources that you can from FEMA, first. Probably the second layer is, is other national charities, and, you know, other lines of money that are gonna come along like that. You know, the Catholic Church, they're gonna have some money available, some of the other religious organizations, they're gonna have money available. We want you guys to, to try to, after FEMA, we're gonna try to go there. And that's gonna come in a lot of different forms, so it's gonna be money, some of it's gonna be materials. You know, I was talking, we were in a meeting yesterday, and we're talking about the need that we're gonna have in ag, just for fencing. You know, we could probably spend $50,000 just building a fence, and, you know, that doesn't, probably wouldn't address any need that you would have personally, but, I mean, I'm just saying that there's a lot of money there. So we want to make sure that, that we access the money in the wisest way possible, because, you know, there is some money, there's a disaster relief fund that you guys probably heard about, maybe some of you have even asked people to donate to, that has been collected at the community foundation right now. You know, we're over $50,000, and that fund, the fact of the matter is, is that's not very much money. And we want to stretch that as far as we can, you know, we're gonna get another $50,000 from an organization, United Way. Basically, Lilly has donated a sum of money, that's over $3 million, to the United Way, you guys probably heard about that. And that's kind of what the Long-Term Recovery Team is trying to do right now, is we're trying to establish policies and procedures, so that we can become eligible to get some of that grant. So, right now, we're trying to gear up so that we can tap into that money, and then we can turn around, and we can have that here for you folks, after some of the money runs out, for FEMA, other national organizations, because the fact of the matter is, money is eventually gonna probably run out. So we want to try to get everything available that you can get from national organizations before it comes down to local. So, you know, we're trying to establish policies and procedures, because Lilly and United Way, they're not going to just give us money. We have to come up with a plan, basically, to show them this is what we need, because they're not gonna write a blank check. So we need to assess a bunch of needs, and that means we need to find out exactly what it is you guys need. That, we're gonna do that through case management, so whenever David refers to case managers, basically, we're gonna try to get case managers, we'd love for them to be local. The fact of the matter is, right now, we only have two local case managers, and they have to go through training, and the training was yesterday and today, and then we have their training Friday and Saturday. So hopefully, we get a couple more volunteers, and if not, we'll have to get case managers from other counties to come in, and basically assess your all needs, they're gonna report that back to, to our committee, and then we're gonna turn around, and we're gonna write up a proposal to submit to, basically, the United Way, saying we need this much money. need this much money. And we're gonna get fifty thousand dollars pretty soon, so that's gonna take us hopefully up over a hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna have. And, uh, you know, then we're gonna be able to start helping. And we're trying to get that established as fast as possible, and it's probably not fast enough, but, but we're, we're getting there. So, uh, I was appointed for this position yesterday, our first meeting was last week, so, so we're rolling with it. And Long-Term Recovery Team is a separate organization from the Washington County Community Foundation. You know, Judy, she's gonna be on this board, but she's not the person that you need to contact whenever you're contacting the Long-Term Recovery Team, that would probably be. So, I'll make sure that I give you guys all my points of contact, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to call. But anyway, that's just the way I feel right there.
Thanks John. All right. Okay, uh, I'm gonna say something, but I can't remember what it was, yeah. I know one of the big issues on, on the homes that were destroyed in the rebuilding process is the amount of permits and things that you need to do to rebuild. Uh, we have, uh, Travis, who's here tonight, and Jason Cockro, who's here tonight. Anyone that has any questions about any of those, will please see them after the meeting, and they'll answer any questions that you might have about that. And Mike from the State Board of Health is here. And I know one of the big issues was, uh, septic systems. Uh, during the tornado, uh, some of the equipment that went in to, to move, some of the debris and things even tore up some of the septic systems, some of them were just outdated, they needed to be replaced, and there's all kinds of issues and questions coming up on that. And I don't know what the, uh, uh, the, I don't know if FEMA covers septic systems or not. Can you help me there? Leo, you gonna help me on this one?
I'm gonna try to, yes.
Mike can, Mike can come up too.
Okay. Uh, FEMA will, um, you may be covered, um, if the septic system was damaged during the storm. So if it occurred after the storm, much later, FEMA will not provide assistance for that at this time. So if it's damaged during the storm, then you, you should apply, if you apply, make sure we know about that.
How do you prove it was damaged during the storm?
That's one thing that I, I'm Mike Haddon, I'm from the local county health department here. Before anybody gets any permits as far as to do any rebuilding, or putting in a mobile home, or any other structure like that, to live in, as far as a dwelling, either ask to come through our office. And what I'm doing is basically going out, uh, I'll give you an example today, uh, and these are our priorities. These are our priorities at the health department right now, is people without homes and getting these done over some of the other things that are going on. I was the one today that basically it had a system that just ran out over the hill. I'm sorry that this natural disaster came through, they'll be still, at this point in time, it's gonna have to be brought up to code. I've had several that there's been not any problems with them, I've got diagrams of them, I've went out and assessed, looked at them, to make sure there's not been any damage like Dave was talking about as far as, um, any heavy equipment running over them or doing any damage. I've had some that, uh, heavy equipment has done damage to these systems, and it's not because they don't understand where the systems are at, and they're just trying to get in and help the folks that are going through this. It's not, I believe it was intentional as far as that goes. And a lot of people really don't know a whole lot where their system is, they might know where their tank is, but they don't know where their laterals are or anything like that. But anyhow, we're, I'm putting a priority on that, there's no charge, it's an existing system form application, it's filled out in our office, I go out on these as quickly as possible, hopefully the same day. Um, if I do find problems with the system, or if there's some additional testing that needs to be done, uh, to see if it is, you know, a working or, in working order and not just directly discharging, um, then I'm still working with the people on that to basically expedite whatever needs to be done.
How do you know, I mean, like, we've been dealing with our insurance adjuster, and he said that he didn't think it was cause of the storm, that it failed at the same time as the storm.
That's, that's when you need to call me out.
Okay.
That, that's really when you need to call me out there. I mean, I've dealt with these issues before with insurance companies where, you know, either trees fell and, and the roots have actually, okay, actually either disrupted a component or got, you know, taken a lateral and made it work, it's leaking out, or whatever it may be. So, uh, yeah, you can call me out on that, and, uh... Yeah, well, it's the Washington County Health Department. Number is eight-eight-three-five-six-zero-three. And my name is Mike Haddon, H-A-D-D-O-N. Well, I'll be glad to assist anybody any way I can. Uh, if there's any other issues, if they're just even in question about it. Uh, I've had some that, uh, people that have volunteered, they've accidentally run over and actually fell, well, their equipment went down into the tank, so they're have, you know, the homeowner's gonna have to replace the tra- tank. That's a legal issue there, that has nothing to do with me, but they still need to get a repor- a permit. There's no charge on any of the permits, they were doing on this, as our local health department commissioners, uh, basically have decided, uh, what it is, I record this drawing, so if on down the road, whether it's you that are still there and need to know where it's at, or any component, whatever, it's on record. Or if you sold it to somebody else and they need to know where it's at, it's on record. It's not just me, you know, saying, okay, you gotta put a septic tank in here and go ahead and do whatever you gotta do. This is, this is what's done.
Now, and we don't go through our contractor, the person that's building our home, we go directly to you?
Yes. Yes, because homeowners are the ones that are responsible for the permits, yes. Yeah, and the existing system form is the first paper you fill out, if it's something that, that you're gonna be required to add a new tank or some component or whatever to the system, then we'll do a repair permit unless there's no charge on, and then that's basically when, I'll meet with whoever your contractor is that's certified within the county here to put it in, and then I inspect it before anything's backfilled. At that, is there any other questions for the health department?
No, I think, I think that's the, the end of that, answering a lot of the questions, it was like, contact you, get the, come out, look at it, get a permit if you need it, and then they go ahead with the contractor, an approved contractor, get the work done, but don't close it up, then you come back out, inspect it, okay, and then it's covered, you got it.
Yes, that's correct. Any other questions folks? Okay, thank you.
Hey David, I got a question. One thing that you're talking about back there.
John, you can skim on up here, we can't hear you all that good.
Well, I got a pretty big mouth. On the May eighth deadline, my question is, is do they need to apply for the SBA loan by May eighth also?
If you turn, you can turn it in, uh, up to two weeks after the eighth, but you have to have it, you have to register with FEMA, you have to have that application, um, before the, uh, before the deadline, and then you have to write a note, explain why you turned in late, but we will accept it late up to, up to two weeks after the, uh, after the deadline. You'll have to mail it in at that point, because we won't be here any longer to help you with it. And, uh, I wanted to say one more thing about the septic tank thing, that's something that the SBA may be able to help with on, on the, on the loan, if it's not covered by your insurance, uh, talk to us about it, because there's a good chance we will be able to do something on that for you.
Well, that takes care of part of my comment, so. And then also, we kinda anticipated that there's gonna be an issue with septic as well, so, we're gonna hopefully have some funds available to help you guys with that.
Oh, and one other thing, one other thing to add, there's also group development, that you can get a low-interest government loan for a septic system, but there's paperwork that has to be filled out, and our office is out in North Vernon, so if anybody needs to know anything about that, you know, the insurance or anything else doesn't cover it, you can also contact me about that too.
Thanks John.
Okay, is there any other questions?
David, I've got one. I actually had storm damage, I didn't realize I was eligible. Desi was telling me that if I deductible, I can get reimbursement from FEMA, possibly.
Are you ready, Mr. Commissioner?
Let me check on that.
Well, you're gonna have to get in line behind the commissioner folks to go see these people.
Uh, we don't do deductibles.
We don't, okay.
Another question, I can go ahead and ask.
That's it. I have insurance.
You can still, you can still register tonight?
Yeah, but, I mean, I, insurance covered everything other than my deductible.
Okay.
But it's not gonna cover the deductible, I'm, I don't know.
Well, some people that have applied with FEMA, we are waiting for paperwork for you, from you, in some cases, whether it's your insurance paperwork, so if you haven't gotten that in, you need to get that in as quickly as possible.
We just got it.
Just got it? You can, you can, if you brought it with you, you can probably provide the info, and, or you can go to the Sellersburg Disaster Recovery Center and, and give it to them, and they'll fax it in. But whatever you're required to get in, you need to get in as quickly as possible. Because there's a lot of people waiting for insurance, we wait for insurance papers.
Exactly, that's what we want.
And let all your neighbors know too, because I know that there's some out there that's not here tonight, but haven't got their paperwork done. And the last two or three people that spoke up there, you see all the documentation that really is a necessity to get done, in order for people to go ahead and, with the steps that need to happen to get your paperwork. So, it's really important that we get all this paperwork done.
Well, I mean, I don't know how the homeowners are supposed to know that they were supposed to contact the health department to get information about septic. I mean, how, how do you know that other than...
Well, and that's why I'm having these meetings.
I mean, yeah.
I wouldn't have had a clue, you know, before the tornado, I wouldn't have had a clue if, if something had come through and, and wiped my home out, I wouldn't have had a clue where to start. And I knew that there was a lot of people probably just like me down here, I don't know what, uh, organizations I need to go through and get, get the certain things done, and that's why I thought it was really important in, in, uh, Indiana Department of Homeland Security, you know, when we filed for a, a state of emergency, I was running in circles at the sheriff's department. I didn't know that, you know, if it wasn't for Indiana Department of Homeland Security coming up and said, hey, you know, you need to get this filed, you need to get this signed, you need to get this happening so these people can, uh, get their, you know, get their papers going and get things going. So, I wouldn't have known to do that, but there's organizations out here that will help you and they'll be here for you. And we will too. We'll answer any questions we possibly can, okay?
I mean, we're, we're just talking to our insurance adjuster, and I mean, we, you know, he didn't even mention that, you know, we should ask the health inspector about...
See, Mike should have been notified, you know.
Yeah. So I mean, how many other things do we not know? Scaring the boy, you know?
But once we sit down with, you know, FEMA, these folks have been through this before, and, you know, they're, they've been from all over the country and they've been through this, and they know, you know, Indiana Department of Homeland Security and FEMA and, and all these, all these organizations that's came in here to help us, they, they've been there, they've done that, and they know what they're doing.
Well, I, just a comment, that, and when you are dealing with, um, your insurance and through your contractor and stuff, they don't necessarily tell you these things, they don't. I've got, I'm in the same shape, I've got insurance, and so they're the people I'm working with. And until you, until they like don't cover something that you think's a problem, you don't even know you're supposed to be doing it.
Is there somebody to help you with your insurance? You know, if you, like you said, if they don't cover something that you think they should, or they're, you know, giving you the runaround, who do you go to?
Okay. John, you wanna tackle that?
Well, that's what we hope these...
John's president, so we're gonna...
Well, that's what we hope, that's what we hope these case managers can help you guys with, is 'cause there, there's so many things that, I mean, no one person's gonna know everything, so...
We're here to help the, the volunteer organization, the way I understood it, John, you correct me if I'm wrong, the way I understood it, our, our top priority is gonna be for the underinsured and the, and the not insured.
Right.
Okay? That's gonna be our top priority, because a lot of folks have thought they had insurance, you know, and then find out that it didn't quite cover what they thought it should have covered, and so they're left there. So that's gonna be, you know, our priorities, is the uninsured and, and the underinsured. Is that correct?
That is, that, that, yeah, we're hoping that the insurance take care of, uh, everybody that has insurance, but there's gonna be people that, that are underinsured and, and non-insured, and that's where we want the Long-Term Recovery Team and the funds that are, that you're gonna be able to get through that to, to really help out there. So, but yeah, that's, the case manager's gonna be a really important role, and, you know, they're not gonna be experts, but they're gonna be spending about twenty hours of training in two days, and they're gonna be picking up an awful lot of information that's gonna help you guys with a lot of these questions that you wouldn't even think about. And I mean, so it's even gonna go, go to tax issues, because there's gonna be some folks out there, probably nobody at this meeting, that are gonna have unpaid taxes, and they're gonna put, put a bunch of improvements and so on and so forth in homes, maybe new homes. And, uh, you know, if they have unpaid taxes, that property could go up for taxation. So I mean, this is, this is a whole, there's a whole bunch of little things that are, that are in the cracks that are gonna, gonna pop up like weed before you know it. But something that's really important to me is, is that people, I mean, you know, we've got Salem Leader here, they're gonna be putting an article out, hopefully it's gonna have some details in it.
Indiana proud, yeah.
I'm getting ready, I'm getting there.
Okay, okay.
On this, gonna have, oh, see, I'm looking for the note taker in the room, and I'm thinking that Rhonda's our girl, uh, along with Leader, and all this stuff's gonna be documented. So if we can steer people, a lot of these folks that really need it are gonna have computer access, but, you know, there's gonna be a record, um, with what Rhonda's doing, and what we're doing, so...
John mentioned property tax, okay? Jason, you wanna explain that? Remember last meeting, we talked about property taxes, we was gonna weigh, uh, property tax fees, okay? You got to listen to the ear that, that's gonna happen. But you don't wanna be building a new home and then find out you're, your property's gonna go up for taxation, so you don't hold property tax.
My name's Jason Cockro, I'm the county assessor. The way the property tax issue works on a disaster, basically like a tornado, you're getting ready to get a tax bill, treasurer mailed them yesterday, and you're probably gonna get them towards the end of this week, early next week. We cannot correct this year's bill. Assessment runs a year behind to start with, and, and just in the dates of when the tornado happened, there's nothing we can do on this year's bill. You're, you're gonna have it, it's gonna come to you. Um, I would advise that you contact the county treasurer, you know, especially if you think you're gonna have a problem, find out what kind of penalties you're gonna run into and that kinda thing. As far as the assessment goes though, there is what's called a Form 137R, it's a disaster petition. Um, you can contact my office at eight-eight-three-four-thousand, um, and I'll repeat that, eight-eight-three-four-thousand, I'm sorry, and talk them faster if she can, right? You can stop by our office, we're in the courthouse, we'll help you fill one out. Um, if you call us, give us the mailing address where you're at to mail you one, we'll fill it out as much as we can, so all you need to do is sign it and get it back. With assessments running a year behind, basically on the twenty-twelve tax bill, you're paying on what was there March one of two thousand and eleven, and that's what I mean when I say taxes run a year behind. With the tornado hitting on March second, technically that affects the March one of twenty thirteen, pay fourteen assessment date. So, basically, anything that was destroyed would come off your twenty-fourteen bill, anything you rebuilt before March one of next year, which hopefully your house is rebuilt, goes right back on and you may not see a difference at all in your tax bill. If you file this disaster petition, it allows us to actually correct what was destroyed for your pay thirteen bill, then your new stuff goes on and pay fourteen, it gives you a year of tax relief on your property taxes.
So if the taxes are paid through the mortgage company, will we see a difference?
What you're gonna need to do is talk very closely to your mortgage company, and I hate to say that, but when it's escrowed, you're gonna wanna make sure, because what they're gonna do is, they're gonna base what you pay next year off of the tax amount you paid this year, because they're gonna anticipate that that's what it is, and then next year it's gonna drop, so the following year, they're gonna wanna drop your escrow amount, and then the next year, they're gonna jack it way up on you, because your tax bill's gonna go right back up. You're, if you're, if your taxes are escrowed, you're really gonna wanna stay in constant contact with your escrow company. Make sure they understand what's happening so that they don't drop your escrow a lot one year, just to turn around and jack it up on you the following year.
So the property taxes cover outbuildings as well, like bonds and that type of thing?
Yeah, it's, it's any kind of building. The way it's phrased in assessment is improvement. When we say improvement, that means improvement to the land, any kind of building, house, pool, garage, anything that's there. If it was partially, it doesn't have to be totally, if it was partially or totally destroyed, you need to get up there and file it. if it was partially or totally destroyed, you need to get up there and file a disaster petition. Anything related to this storm, even if it was, and me and Commissioner Michler were just talking about this, even if it's simply just hail damage, you are, if it came through with this storm, you're eligible to file a disaster petition. We're gonna have to follow up with you and ask for copies of your insurance paperwork and that kinda stuff. I don't care about what kind of amount you get from insurance, we're trying to verify the damage amount. Uh, so, you know, you, you don't have to open up your, your personal stuff to us, we just need to verify.
Well, my question being, we had three outbuildings that were completed on. So, I mean, our house was hit, but it, it, it was still standing, but it's gotta be plowed over. I mean, we probably won't rebuild the three outbuildings.
Right.
So will we get a cut or break on that?
Yeah, if those don't go back on, most, you'll never have that assessment go back on.
Okay.
But yeah, you definitely, if you have not already filed, you need to file one. I've got my business card up here, it's my contact information. Uh, you can call the office, you can stop by. We'll do everything we can to help you to file it. It's one form. Literally, we'll fill it out for you, all you need to do is sign it, then by law, we'll come take another look at it, verify what was destroyed. Um, and like I said, if it's something like hail damage, we may ask you for some supplemental information, just so we can verify. Any other questions about that?
Thanks, Jason. I know you explained that the last time, but I wanna make sure everybody understands.
Well, the, the path of the tornado, according to RGIS software, went over twelve hundred subparces. And not all of those are gonna have damage, but so far we've had fifty-nine petitions filed. So there are more people out there that need to get with us.
Gotta be, gotta be more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Desi, do you wanna say your name?
Yeah, I need to.
Well, come on up here.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna give you a couple of contact numbers, too, if you are having problems, or have questions, or, um, my office, I might be able to help you, or I've got also Pete and Rhonda here that, uh, have been working, and Melissa, Melissa's not here tonight, but they've been working here since day two, and been working with a lot of families, with the volunteers, and, um, getting supplies and stuff up to y'all, and just any, trying to meet, you know, the needs that you guys have. And, um, we wanna continue that, but we are moving or relocating to a different location. Uh, we've closed down our distribution center at the Pekin United Methodist Church. We do still have the supplies and stuff, and, um, all the items that, that you guys are needing, we still have that. And if you contact them, we can get that care package to you, or you can come in and pick it up, uh, as you guys need that. So I'm gonna make sure to stress that, just because we're not at the Pekin United, uh, Family, uh, Center, Life Center, our doors are not closed. We've moved the office now to the, uh, it's the FOP, the old FOP building, it's the old fire, Pekin Fire Department, the old, uh, it's a white block, concrete block building, uh, kinda back of the town hall. And the number for that is nine six seven six one one six, six, sixty-one sixteen. And, um, Pete and Rhonda will be working, and Melissa out of there. And there is an answering machine there, because they, um, are in and out to, um, delivering and checking out sites and stuff, and so just leave a message on there and a number for them to get back to you. And then my office number is eight eight three four nine six two. And, and I can help you with, uh, try to gear you where you need to go, and reference the, the building permits, um, subject permits, any questions that you get on that, um, addressing if you're relocating, um, or, uh, we've had a couple of people that have gone, um, they, their partial goes all the way through, uh, from one road to another, and they've moved, uh, they're not going back where they were, and they're gonna go on the backside of their property. So that requires them to have a new address, a new driveway check and a new address, uh, too. And one thing I guess I, I, I need to really stress as far as, and Travis can str- touch base on this, too. Some of the affected areas are in the town of Pekin, uh, and could be in the incorporated towns, which your building permits, uh, run different. And, and of course, you have the, uh, water, the city water and stuff. So your subject and your building permits are kinda, wanna kinda run different if you're in the incorporated areas. And Travis can touch a little bit on that. Um, but I wanted to make sure to get across, uh, you guys, or, or get out there, our new number, uh, and our new location. And Pete and Rhonda, um, are still working with volunteers, if you all need any assistance, uh, they are still touching base and seeing what the needs are, and, um, still heading people out your old way.
Um, we've got a, a tree's down on the back of my property, and you mentioned roads moving driveways and things like that. I'm not actually looking to move the driveway, but put a different cut through for them to cut the wood.
Like an access road or something? Is that what you're?
Yeah, basically, that's what I would call an access road off of, like, farther up on my property, to the, to a level spot where they can stage the wood.
Off of like the, a county road?
Yeah, I'm kind of crazy.
Okay, all right.
Can, can you all direct me or help me with that? Do I need to get like a permit or a okay, or a?
It, it needs to be, that location does need, if you're coming on, uh, making a new drive off of a county road, that location does need to be checked out, just because, uh, we wanna make sure you have the right site distance when you're pulling out there, and you're not pulling out underneath a hill that might be at risk, or, um...
It's not, you, you can see well, it's the, it's the spot where the big drainage is.
Okay.
Yeah, I've had, uh, I would like to talk to somebody to make sure that that's simply in a environmentally good spot because of the drainage there.
Okay, um, probably Gerald would maybe probably be able to get out to that location. If you give us an address, uh, after the meeting here, if you give us an address, uh, he can go check that, the county highway, he can go
Okay.
out and check that location out for you, and see what you might need.
He probably even knows me.
Okay.
At least by the telephone.
Okay. Pete, Rhonda, is there anything that I need to add, or have I missed anything? Pete, you, have I missed anything that might need to be out there as far as?
No, uh, I did my home phone number on.
I didn't know if you wanted that or not, no.
I saw it.
Okay.
Eight eight three four seven six three.
Eight eight three, four seven six three. Okay. Eight eight three four seven six three, and he does have an answering machine, so. And Pete's been coordinating, uh, all the volunteers since, like I said, day two or three on Pete there, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I had mine, I had mine, and Pete's listed on the door down there.
Okay.
And, uh, my home number is eight one two nine six seven two five nine seven.
Nine six seven two five nine seven, and that's Rhonda. Does anyone else have any?
And it doesn't even have to be about volunteers, or whatever, if you have a question.
Yeah. Pete and Rhonda are very good to help as far as try to guide, uh, and give you guidance also, too, because like I said, they've been in, in it from day, you know, two here, and they're familiar with all the areas and a lot of the families, and so their, their doors are wide open for you.
Okay, do we have any more questions for anyone up here? All right.
Um, we, we have, um, probably similar to her, problems with a lot of downed trees. We don't need a road access or anything, but is there a proper way of, I mean, right now, we're just cutting and burning everything, because we can't find a way of, any way else of, you know, disposing of it, then. I mean, we've got like five acres of woods that are down. Is there any advice on how to take care of that?
I would say that we've seen people wanting firewood here.
Yeah, let, let me dress up.
Anybody wants firewood?
Yeah, we've already got a lot of it stacked up, we don't have any use for it.
I know a lot of this is, um, my cabinet, I know a lot of this has been overlooked, and then they've also had emergency permits for the, uh, air curtain out here on Hurst Road. But basically, in the state of Indiana, there is no open burning. The only thing that can be burnt is clean wood products, so you could do that, but, excuse me, if your neighbor is affected, or somebody's affected by that smoke and particulate matter, say they have asthma, then it's something that you're gonna have to cease doing, or do it at a smaller site, maybe alternative area, or something like that. Okay? But nothing, no tires to use for accelerants to get these things going, no. So, that's just-
No shingles?
No shingles. No, no petroleum-based products, okay?
There's black smoke, no good.
Uh-oh, we have the Health Department coming.
Uh, about trees, we, we have a program, uh, there's no funding behind it right now, which is kinda frustrating for us to, uh, and if you can come and say, I'm in, you can apply for that at my office. Our number's eight eight three three zero zero six. The program may involve debris removal, uh, some timber skin improvement practices, possibly some tree planting. But what we're hearing from our district foresters is that probably the best thing you can do is get a timber cutter in there, salvage what you can, and then just let it naturally regenerate. Uh, if you would like for the district forester to come out, uh, the guy that handles our area, his name is Ben McKenny, and I don't have his phone number with me, but if you call our office, why we can get you in touch with him.
What was that number of you?
Eight eight three three zero zero six.
We have a lot of ours cut up, but it's getting to the point where it's too big. We can't even cut it. I don't know how to get it out. Some of it's in our lake. Um, the back part of our woods was totally knocked down, and the trees are just huge, and I'm not at all comfortable cutting them myself.
You, you shouldn't be. It's very dangerous, especially with tornado-twisted trees. Uh, you wanna, to get an expert in there, somebody that can handle timber.
Yeah, if the trees are big enough, and they, I've, I've talked to two, um, places now that deal with buying wood, and they'll try to take, and you'll actually get money for the, the, like, twenty inches and up, um, diameter, um, if it has fallen and pulled the roots up, they can't use the ones that break.
No, none of them are broken there.
The roots, they're all pulled out of the roots, they're just laying there.
You can potentially get money, but they're, they are out there, and if you have enough that it's worth them coming to look at, they'll, they'll come out and look.
There is some seven trees, and seven trees.
Well, I've called a couple of them, but they said that, you know-
They didn't want.
Yeah, that they said they're tornado, that they're twisted, and they're not gonna come out, so.
Well, we, we just need to, I can give you the names of the two that I've talked to, so.
Okay.
I can read them.
Uh, well, I've got the mic, I'm also gonna mention, we've also got a program through the federal government. It's, uh, it's a twenty, it's a CUSHA program, we pay seventy-five percent of cost, uh, to reinstall fencing and, um, clear debris off of cropping fields now. I think the majority of the debris has been moved by our fantastic volunteer effort that we've had out here, but if you're still needing assistance with those sort of issues, why also contact our office at eight eight three three zero zero six.
Okay, any other questions? Do you have anybody up here at the table want to speak? Have I got everybody? Okay. All right, I know there's some people back here getting, getting some things accomplished, so that's good. Okay. Thank you all for coming. Uh, hopefully we've answered questions, and I'd appreciate it if every, all the, uh, question answering people would stick around, uh, in case some of these folks has some additional questions that they'd like to talk to you about. I appreciate it, thank you.